Good evening, everyone.
Turn on my mic. Good evening, welcome to the August 18th City Council meeting for the city of Cannon Falls. Could I have a roll call, please?
Bringle, here.
Duncan, here.
Gesmi, here.
Lundell, here.
Mattson, here.
Montgomery, here.
Althoff, here.
Would you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, approval of the agenda. I have a motion to approve the agenda. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Gesmi, a second, by Bringle to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. We'll get right into the consent agenda. Consent agenda items may be adopted under one motion as presented or may be removed for discussion and resolution as council business. For you in the audience at home, I'll go through the consent agenda. Item A, just and correct claims for the accounting period ending August 13th, 2020. Item B, minute meetings for the August 4th, 2020 City Council meeting. Item C, Resolution 2500, approving the reapportionment of assessments upon land, Reimer Companies. Item D, approve the Public Works Director position higher. Item E, Resolution 2501, accepting a grant of $500 for renewing the countryside for the farmer's market. And item F, installation of a new RPZ at the waste treatment plant. Is there anything the council would like to bring down? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Bringle, a second by Duncan, to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. In that consent agenda was approving the new Public Works Director. I'm just going to introduce him, he's sitting in the back, Kevin Zidl.
Close enough.
Close enough?
Google me as fast.
Kevin is our pick for the Public Works Director and we're working on that and he'll soon be on the job. Welcome aboard.
Thank you, appreciate the opportunity.
Okay, we'll get into council business. Item A, introduction and first reading ordinance 369, establishing a park advisory board. Neil?
Yeah, we looked at this at the last meeting and made a couple of adjustments and what you see in front of you is the first official reading of establishing the park advisory board for Cannon Falls. If you've got any questions, I would like to answer them.
Questions?
It's pretty short and it just establishes the membership and stuff, so there'll be a few more coming as you're back in your goal-setting agenda from, I think it was January, there were several boards that need to be addressed.
A motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 369?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Motion by Duncan, second by Montgomery, approve the first reading of ordinance 369, establishing a park board advisory board. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Item B, request for proposals, legal services discussion. Neil?
Also in your goal-setting agenda back in January, you had RFPs for engineering, which we just completed, and legal services, and to look at all other consulting companies that work for the city of Cannon Falls. So this is the next step in your goal-setting agenda that you guys wanted to get completed for the year. What we do is if you approve it, we'll go through the same process as we did with the engineering services.
Very good. Is there a motion to request proposals for legal services?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Lundell and a second by Duncan to approve our request for proposals for our legal services. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Okay, item C, Finance Department reclassification and compensation approval. Neil?
A couple of months ago, we had David Drouin and Associates do a reclassification and reorganization of the Finance Department. It was determined that we could eliminate one position, actually one and a half positions, and put that work amongst the current employees and save a few dollars. With that, I had the employees fill out a form and explain their job duties and sent it off to David Drouin and Associates and they came back with a new classification. With that comes a compensation requirement too, that you see in your packet. There was three positions that we looked at, the utility billing and office assistant, the HR technician and the accounts payable clerk, and the city clerk and payroll clerk. Each one of them, the first two, the utility billing and the accounts payable clerk, moved one step and one grade each, and the city clerk moved two steps to grade 12 and one step and on step seven. So with that said, the actual financial commitment for the reorganization is around $12,000. But if you look at the savings on not redoing the or rehiring the finance director and the part-time employee, just the part-time employee was $20,000. So it's considerable savings for the city and the employees are stepping up to do this.
I like it, it's saving us money and we've shifted some people around and it's, I think it's a good thing.
Right.
Any other input from the council?
No, it's always good to review these things anyway, and this was an opportunity that we just, looks like we couldn't pass up, so this is good.
I make a motion to do what Neil just said.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's been a motion by Gesmi and a second by Duncan to approve the Finance Department reclassification and compensation. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
I abstain, John.
Okay, five, four, and one abstention. Okay, item D, farmer's market discussion. Neil, you want to start us out?
At the last meeting, Mr. Olson from Artisan Plaza, excuse me, came to talk about the farmer's markets in the city of Cannon Falls. I don't think it's to anybody's surprise that it's been kind of a hot topic inside and outside the city council chambers. So it was a request to put it on the agenda for discussion and to figure out options that we could consider for the markets. And in your packet, you'll find there's a couple of, probably I think there's four options that you could consider. And I guess it's up to the city council what their thoughts are.
Well, fact of the matter is, it's not like the old days. I mean, when we had the farmer's markets, it's been down there forever. In the fall, everybody brought their vegetables and it was a great thing, but today is today. I mean, there's ordinances now and we got to abide by and it's just changed. I mean, down in the parking lot on Saturday mornings, it's crowded. I mean, as was pointed out at the last meeting, the number of people using that trail has doubled this year. Ninety thousand last year, we're going to over 200,000 people using that trail this year. I mean, that makes for a congested time down there. And you know, we've had some incidents down there with a tack last fall and, but still, I've talked to the downtown business and being one myself for many years, I mean, they like it down there too. I mean, it brings some people downtown, so it's a tough issue, but you've got, Neil's made, given you four options here, which I think is good. I'd like to see the council adopt one of those motions tonight. Yep.
I don't know if y'all know who I am, I'm Tim Molly. I'm a vendor downtown and I just want to have a brief statement before you make your decision. Cannon Falls Downtown Farmer's Market is a place for community to unite, purchasing locally grown foods and products, ventured around downtown and celebrate the unique atmosphere that the Cannon Falls offers. We support all small businesses by stimulating local economies with residual economic effects. We provide a healthy food option to service those who might not have the luxury of transportation. We create a festive, exciting area to safely congregate on Saturday mornings to bring people into downtown. This one-stop shop is a vital location for, it is a central hub of all transportation going to Hastings, Red Wing, and Northfield. There have been countless times when commuters going to and from stop to shop and ask questions about businesses within town. We gladly promote our town as best place to eat and visit. We also promote the Chamber of Commerce by handing out Chamber booklets to visitors about our community. We have been recognized by Mayo Clinic for our efforts in contributing toward healthier lifestyles for the community. This is a unique year with COVID-19 and with a number of restricted activities closed across the state that is preventing people to do many things. Thus, we have a higher-than-normal volume of bikers this year. We do not see this as a hindrance to our market, but we see it as an opportunity to sell our town as a place to visit. In fact, we welcome the extra volume of people. We have offered our services either in product or information. We would actually like to welcome more bikers for the more they see us as an exciting town to visit with our market, they are more likely to return on a different mission to spend time in our community. The key here is cooperation. Each business should have the right to succeed or fail based on their business's own doings. A business cannot hide under a rock for fear of liability. Insurance is there to address those concerns and one can debate all day on the what ifs. What are the real concerns with liability? In regards to some issues with zoning, it continues to evolve, it continues to be an evolving argument with the lack of words, farmer's market or open market. I can address those concerns with a state statute. On a Minnesota statutes governing local cities and towns, 462.357, Official Controls Zoning Ordinances, Subdivision 1E, on Nonconformities, Section A, it states, except as otherwise provided by law, any nonconformity, including the lawful use of occupation of land or premises existing, the time of adoption of an additional control within this chapter may be continued. In other words, nonconformities is basically a grandfather clause to protect businesses whom existed prior to an ordinance put in place. According to the city's webpage, 15152.627, permitted access use, accessory use, under B1 zoning, that ordinance was passed in 5/4 of 2006. The farmer's market downtown has been existing for 30 years. The city would be in violation of state ordinances if they were to vote to try to remove the farmer's market from the downtown location based on this statute. We would hope that we could come to closure to this issue. For us farmers are at the peak of our harvest and making a change at this time of the year puts us in economic hardship at a time that all small businesses are encountering similar issues. We would hope the city would show some empathy toward our needs. And I can hand out the state ordinance if you want to review it.
So as far as the four options, the one I like the best is two. I could live with three if we had to. I just think a farmer's market in the center of town is more convenient for everyone. Thank you. Everybody in town knows where it is. The businesses like it. If you ask the people around town, I'd be willing to bet the majority of them would prefer to have one there. Doesn't mean we can't have another one at Artisan Plaza. He can do whatever he wants out there, as far as I'm concerned. But having the only farmer's market literally on the farthest edge of town isn't convenient for anybody, especially those that don't drive or, you know, want to shop at other businesses.
I agree with you, Derek. This week, I've had a lot of people come up to me, and actually my family, and mention about downtown and other businesses support it. I just think that's where we should be.
I agree with you guys. This has probably been one of the hottest issues, the most communication from citizens, and every single person that has come to call me or stop at my house or get my attention has said, keep the farmer's market downtown. And Mayor, going back to what you had said about the trail and how busy downtown is, for a town of 4,000 that we get 90,000-plus visitors to use the trail, we still have that overflow parking on the other side of John Birch Park. Nothing attracts a crowd like a crowd. And Saturday morning, our downtown farmer's market, the people that are pedestrians, the people that are on their bikes, look at, just the people that are moving, the energy down there, I'd hate to see us take that away from the downtown businesses, but I also just hate to see that be taken away just to open a few spots for the cyclists who are our visitors and we want to treat them as guests, but there's places for them too. And we can accommodate both. And I think, you know, a year ago, I thought, we're a town of 4,000, why do we need two farmer's markets? I think this discussion has really shown that they're two completely different farmer's markets. You've got Artisan Plaza and they can do what they want, it's their parking lot, thank you for doing that, that's wonderful. People who choose to go there, get some flowers, get some different wares, great. But downtown has a little bit more tradition and in an open market, if all those vendors said, it makes more sense for us to go to Artisan Plaza, they would, and they haven't. So I don't want to take that right away from them. I think we need to change the ordinance to include farmer's market and keep them right where they're at.
I'm kind of on the same page. The only thing is, I think there should be a number five here. I think, I don't think we should, should have brought it up tonight. I think we should wait till the ground has froze and we don't have anything else to worry about. Right now, like Tim says, God, I hated agreeing with you, but the, we're all moving, everybody's got their spots now. Let's let them be, let's let them be for this year and work on this this winter. And that's all I got to say.
My concern is the conditional use permit. If we, now Dave Olson's got one out at Artisan Plaza, there is one downtown. By issuing a conditional use permit, what does that open it up? I mean, can somebody come in and sell vacuum cleaners down in the parking lot?
I think we should consult our attorney on that and make sure everything is focused towards farmer's market and not turn it into a flea market.
Right.
So we'd have to be careful, we'd have to make sure the attorney is well aware of what our intent is and draft an ordinance like that.
Well, I'm going to obviously be somewhat in the minority here. I think we should only have one market. The EDA's been working with Artisan Plaza, with food aggregation and all that. They have a flat parking lot. Ours is at an angle with people that can drive in and out of there, creating a lot of safety issues. We can argue about liability. We built the trailhead specifically to get bikers to come there. There's no way you can prove who brings more business to town and, you know, parking is an issue for us. And if the council decides they want to change the ordinance, and I don't care what Mr. Molly says about a state statue, that does not take over our zoning. We should only have one market and it should be out at Artisan. And thanks, kudos to David Olson for doing that. We also got to remember, the Artisan Plaza market is four times what you see downtown. I've been downtown on Saturday morning many times at both locations and it's like you said, it's three or four times bigger out at Artisan and three or four times the people. People are going to drive, they're not walking. I know someone mentioned at a previous meeting, well, they walk from Cannon River as well, certainly not during COVID. And there are buses that some of these places take if someone needs to get there, if that's a worry. Our ordinance currently says no. I'm not necessarily against allowing them to finish the year up, but I am against changing the ordinance just because of a few handful of people who do not pay taxes in this town. You know, Morris and John, you mentioned your stores, you guys pay taxes, these people are getting freebies. That should not be allowed. I'd also say if you are going to change the ordinance and approve a conditional use permit, which is troublesome in and of itself in the B1 zone, that we move it to the overflow lot to not only make it safer, but free up some slots for our friends coming in to bike in town.
Well, I talked to, right before the meeting here, I had a downtown business owner call me and he was representing quite a few of the businesses downtown and they would like to see us fight to keep it open. So I don't think it's a fairness issue as far as the downtown business owners paying taxes and some people don't. They want to see it stay here, so.
And also, don't all the vendors pay the same licensing fee if they're at Artisan or at downtown? So when you said they're getting freebies, they pay the same to be at either location, so that's false.
Right, but at Artisan, they're on private property. Parking lots are on city property, so we are subsidizing them after a fashion. I don't know if Mary Jill wants to lay in on this.
Is it my turn? I mean, it is. This is a tough one, it really is. It's not as black and white as you might, some people might think. But just because something's been somewhere for years and years and years doesn't mean it is always going to be there. There is change. I think the times I've gone down, I've never been out to the one at Artisan Plaza, I've only heard that it's busy and there are usually about 15 vendors there. The times I've been downtown, there are three, maybe four vendors downtown and they don't, it's odd because I've been in the farmer's market before, it's been years, but I was there. And the minute someone leaves early, a car pulls in because they're going to go on the trail or something else happens. And the idea that people are really walking there from other areas, not so much. You know, and certainly people out at Sunrise Villa aren't walking downtown. People in the, maybe in the close area are, but I don't think there's a lot of walking. And Mr. Molly, your sounds about cooperation and all that kind of are falling on deaf ears here. I saw the emails that you were barraging our city employees with and as far as I'm concerned, no matter what happens, I don't want to give you another permit. You have been so awful. You almost brought one of our employees to quit over this. It's not worth it. It's just not worth it. Now, this doesn't mean we can't ever bring it back to downtown, but I don't think it's worth it to change an ordinance for this. We've got one market, it's kind of like, you know, remember back in the 70s, John, when that awful Cannon Mall was built? That was going to be the end of civilization as we knew it. They had a grocery store that was going to be open seven days a week, you know, they had all this stuff and my God, the mall versus Cannon Falls downtown became a huge issue for years. Now, why do we need Artisan Plaza versus downtown? That's what we've got. And I just don't, I don't think it's worth it to change the ordinance for that, I really don't. And that's just my opinion, but after, you know, fashioning yourself, Tim is the manager of the market, you know, we don't, we don't need this. This has become a lot of trouble for the city, I think. My opinion.
Mary Jill, just changing the ordinance would just allow it. It wouldn't mean, like you were saying, I mean, it would just change the ordinance so that a farmer's market would be included. It wouldn't mean that it had to remain there because the vendors, like we said, the free-market idea of, if the vendors want to move, they'll go to Artisan Plaza.
I agree.
So if we have two spots and change the ordinance just to make it legal.
I agree with that, but then I'm not, I'm not sure a city-owned parking lot is the best place where we actually have people actively parking at that time. I would say if we were, if we were going to allow it, let's move it to the lot, either that overflow lot or even the one across from the fire station, that's downtown. We could have it there.
They tried that one overflow, it was a disaster.
Then it's not going to be good for bikers either, is it? I don't know.
Oh, bikers, they can park there. They got a bike, they can get to the.
Yeah, but they're not from Cannon Falls, they're not going to know where to park.
Okay, if we put up different signs, you know, say parking, you know, to the lots, it'll make a difference.
Human nature is such that people are going to park, all of us are going to park at the closest spot if we can do it. We cannot force the bikers to park in the overflow lot. However, we can control a business which will be there.
Yeah.
Also, when you want to consider changing a ordinance, you should have a good reason. Because it's been there for 30 years or certain people want it there, that's not a good reason to change a law. You have to have a good reason and I haven't heard one yet tonight.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to move this discussion to a better time in the year, such as October or November, and we'll continue this. And with that, we can have our little discussions with our attorney about the ramifications of changing it and that's my motion.
I'll second it. Motion's been made by Gesmi, a sec by Mattson, to table this issue until, say, November Discuss it at that time. Any discussion, any more discussion?
It's just, once again, once again, we're kicking a can down the road.
I think this is where I originally kicked the can to this spring though, so I don't think we're changing too much, right?
Well, I think it's what we were going to do anyway.
Yeah, we were going to wait.
Yep.
And I'd like to hear the counsel, the attorney as well on this.
You got to come up with some kind of a legal description. So, if we open it up to farmers, it doesn't include vendors.
Well, you're opening a real can of worms there if you do that.
Well, maybe. Maybe.
Maybe. Well, anyway, there's a motion to table this till November 1st. Any more discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
Aye.
Five to one, motion pass. Okay, moving on. The John Birch Park football field. Neil.
At the finance committee meeting, we had representatives from the school, and I see they're all here again, to carry out a discussion on whether football, since it's been moved to the spring, can be played on John Birch Park. It's a decision that the finance committee had moved quite quickly to the council. There wasn't a lot of discussion and decisions made. I think the council has taken their consideration, baseball also being played right after that, condition of spring fields and the frost and the mud and et cetera. So, I guess they're here to have that discussion.
Okay.
Dan?
I'm Dan Myers. I'm the head football coach. On a typical fall, Cannon Falls football is played at John Birch Park. There's usually eight to 10 football games played there every fall, and it brings the whole community together. It's an awesome event. I'm sure most of you guys have been down there. I think football has been played down there for at least 75 years. I don't know the exact, exact date when they started. But this year, there will be no games played down there in the fall because the high school league has moved our season to the spring. And so, what I would ask the council and sort of a compromise is that we would be allowed to play up to three games on John Birch Park next spring compared to eight to 10 in the fall. And that would allow us to get our varsity out there for some games. We wouldn't play any JV games on John Birch Park this spring. We wouldn't pull the bleachers out because I know those bleachers are pretty heavy. And when the, when the field is wet and they're still frosting, and it wouldn't be a good time to pull anything heavy out there. We're actively looking for other sites to play at. We've got a few communities around that have artificial turf. And we haven't, we can't guarantee that we can find something. So, I would ask that you allow us to play up to three games if the conditions are right. Obviously, April, you never know what it's going to be like down there. There could be a foot of snow. The ground could still be frozen. In that case, we wouldn't play down there. But if the conditions are right, we would ask that you allow us to use the park.
Dan, what would be the issue with playing at the school instead of down here? Just because of tradition?
No, not, one thing, there's no lights at the school. So, we would have to play day games.
I'm sure the kids would enjoy getting out of school.
There you go. Yeah, if we could do it on a school day. There's no lights on the field, and that field itself is not in game condition. It's a, it's a lot of weeds. It's really, it needs a lot of work. And that's something that we've been trying to get going for a few years now. But it's not an ideal playing service. It could be done. I'm not saying we could never play up there. But, you know, just the, John Birch Park is a much better, better place to play football.
Well, certainly, a lot of the younger grades always played games at the high school.
Yeah, up to eighth grade. Eighth grade, junior high games are played there and flag football. So, yes, there are games played there.
And of course, day games, you can always play them on a Saturday. I really do worry about any games in the spring on John Birch because of what it potentially can do for the baseball field. Traditionally, when you play in the fall, and sometimes damage, and I know Bucky and I revisited the two mud games there in about five days, the damage, it takes so long to recover. I mean, even last summer, my son was still playing Legion baseball. And you could see in July, the imprint and damage to the outfield from the bleachers that were still sitting there. So, I really concerned about allowing that to take place. I also know, and you didn't mention, but usually there's been one boy and one girl soccer game down at the field every year. I'd rather not take down the baseball fence for, for the one or two soccer games this season because they play mostly up at the school, I believe. So, I would not want the field to be put to that potential damage. And if you have that damage and you start baseball, which would start, I believe, mid-May, some kid is going to get hurt because of, I mean, you get bad bounces anyhow when you play ball, but you have a field that's beat up. We all know what it does to the field. I mean, you know, I'm a former bomber myself way back in the olden days. I just can't see us approving that kind of play that close to.
I would like to maybe propose another, a different compromise. It doesn't give you up to three games. But how about if we allowed you to have your parents' game or your seniors' game or whatever? You know, you always do one where you're honoring the seniors or the parents' night or whatever.
So, one game, the senior night?
I, I think that's fair. I know it's a big thing for you to switch everything over. On the other hand, we don't even know if there's going to be football even in the spring. That's, that's a question for all of us. But I, I'm really sensitive to the fact that I think John Birch Park is a baseball diamond. I really do. I think it's a baseball diamond that we've been playing football on. And I'm, I feel for you in that you're having to ramp up, if you play at the hot, at the high school, you'll have to ramp up pretty quickly and do a lot of work. But I just don't see how the two seasons can really coexist like that. That's just me.
You know, I'm going to let, Reed, do you want to speak on the one game? Because that might be a, you know, I don't know if it's practical to do one game down there. Maybe he, this is Reed.
Maybe not.
Sure. Reed Olson, Activities Director, new to the district. Thank you for the opportunity. Correct, since I am new, I have not witnessed the tradition down of Friday nights down at John Birch. A couple of things here to go in with what Coach Myers has said. Obviously, if the fence does not come down, then that will null and void the soccer matches. That's of in itself. The other piece of this here, the high school league, when they made their changes, they also made reductions. So, reductions to the number of weeks of the season and also reductions to the number of the games. We don't know what the schedule looks like. Anything that I've ever had on paper to this point does no longer exist. And we won't know what that official start date is and that end date is until the high school league determines those, and then we build our schedules. So, we are anticipating that we would have three home games and then whatever postseason were to look like. So, you're right, we're looking at some neighboring opportunities that could host us on a turf facility that depends on their rental facility tickets and with the guidance and allowing visitors to come. If they tell us yes now, that could change down the road, too. That's all speculation. We don't know that. But in regards to the three, that we would take a look at trying to do varsity only and having our JVs and our junior highs play elsewhere.
You know, Dan mentioned about if the field is playable, and not the exact words, but what would constitute it's okay to play on or not. We all know about the Minnesota snow, frost, you know, coming out of the ground, rain, all those things that can happen.
Are you talking about the one on campus?
No, 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 the John Birch.
Oh.
Because he mentioned possibly three.
I don't know. Because, you know, the chatter along with that is what are the schools that are further up north going to do at that timeframe?
Yeah, that's for sure.
We don't know. And again, that's why the speculation is it's going to start March 15th. We don't know that.
Yeah. No, I know there's, there's a bone of contention among us who have been bombers. Do we play, stay downtown? Or do we do what most schools do and play on their own property? This is also a golden opportunity for the school. And I know financially, it's a bad time for all of us. But boy, that's where the move should be made. I know Mary Jill didn't mention it, but her dad put a million dollars. You got those nice bleachers and other stuff back there. It's time for the school to step up and actually use it.
Well, to go back to John Birch Park instead of the school in the future, their football field, I agree with your concerns of what spring in Minnesota could be, what it could do to John Birch Park. But at the same time, when Mary Jill says we might not even be playing, we have to ask ourselves, this issue isn't just John Birch Park. It's us as a city allowing the school to keep their home. If we say no, we kick them out, we make them homeless. We're dealing with a pandemic. We're going to be pushing them out of a 75-year tradition because it might get a little messy. And we're making it harder on them. And we talked about, you know, seniors and what if every game was a away game or if Farmington was home for three nights. I think at the end of the day, when we look at the big picture, it's, it's better for the community for us to say, let's let them play. Let's not shut the door and send them out. And also about the school, Frank Cox Field is a, at the high school, Frank Cox Field is a beautiful baseball diamond. So, if those three Friday nights rip up John Birch, I hope it doesn't happen, but if it were to happen, the baseball season, it'd be a lot easier for our bombers to be able to have their JV and varsity up at Frank Cox. It also might even be easy for the Bears to have a couple of games there if spring was, you know, because we talked about that. John Birch Park is going to see a lot of action. And if it needs that rest, we have a second facility. Regarding football, we don't.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, too. There really is no backup football field that you can play on. Frank Cox would work. Is it ideal? I don't know. Maybe, maybe not. Let's not forget, too, the school is paying us rent for the football field. I can't remember how much it was.
It was 1,500 plus the cost of 75 per game for lights.
So, they're, they're putting money in to help us get it ready if it were to get ripped up.
Well, I wouldn't, if we didn't let them play, I wouldn't charge them.
No, but they are paying to.
But, you know, originally, when you folks came forward, I thought you wanted to rush on our decision because that would give you lead time to maybe re-sod the football field up at, up behind the school. That was kind of what I was led to believe, but.
Yes, depending on your decision, that could be one of the, one of the options we could consider. I'll make a motion to approve the use of John Birch Park this spring for football for the bombers.
Second.
That's for three games?
Yes, for the three games, no soccer, no JV, correct?
What about playoffs?
And possible playoffs.
Okay.
Okay, motion is made by Montgomery and second by Gesmi to use John Birch Park for football next spring. Is there any other discussion?
I would like, if we allow this, I would like the city to be able to veto it if we deem that the, that the field isn't playable. You know, so that, what I mean is so that you're not just saying we want this week, this week, and this week, and then one of these weeks, it's mud. And you say, no, we can still play on it. I think we should be able to say, no, it's not playable this week.
Who would make that decision?
Public Works, I suppose.
Jonathan?
I mean, really, it's our.
Well, Reed, does the Minnesota State High School League have, I mean, they have a page about field conditions, and it honestly talks about grass height and all that stuff. So, they, the Minnesota State High School League has rules in place, and I.
I think we would allow common sense to come into play there. And obviously, if it's, if weather has not.
What grass in March? I'm sorry.
If the weather is not making the field playable, then we would need to take a look at other options.
Okay.
And let's just remember, too, the season begins March 15th, but that's just the season, much like in the end of summer, that you might have practice for two, three weeks before you get out on the actual field, correct? But like we said.
Right.
So, and.
And you're not planning on practicing at John Birch, just playing games?
Correct. That is correct. We would not practice there.
And only varsity.
Correct.
You've heard the motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Aye.
That's a four to two.
Mm-hmm.
Motion pass. Okay, item F, CBT and MTST Trail Connection Plans Review and Set a Quote Date. Neil or Bill?
Or, or both of us.
Or both of you.
I can start. We received a grant last year to make a connection between the two regional trails. And we've been working through that process. And we come up to the final plans and specs. We hired WHKS to put them together and go out for quotes. That's what you got in your, in your packet. What we found out after the packet was released on Thursday is the DNR has made some difficult decisions for us. And that, what we proposed to do was to split the project because there was a considerable overrun on the estimate that there was given to the, and put in the grant. So, we proposed to split the project and, you know, there's a section where it's gravel. And then there was a section where we were going to mill and overlay it and, and put in a new fence. With that said, with the considerable overrun of how much the, the project cost was, we decided to split it and just focus on the gravel part so it would all be bituminous. So, that connection would be made. Yeah, the, the bituminous in the older part of the trail would still be the same. There'd be a new fence. But when we discussed this with the, the folks up at the DNR, they pretty much told us, if you don't do the whole project, you're not going to get the grant. So, I'll let Bill take it from there.
Well, thank you, Neil. And just elaborate a little more on the DNR, the project review staff had told us our phasing plan was all right, but we needed the grant administration staff. So, that was the part that we just received in the last day. So, what, as Neil mentioned, what would happen then is the grant match was set to be $36,000 from the city of Cannon Falls. It would now be $250,000. So, the positive is, is we actually think the city would be better off turning down the grant, reapplying in December for a larger grant versus footing more of the project out of pocket. Now, the risk is, you might not get the grant. So, the first thing Neil and I asked the DNR grant is, or grant administrators, if we turn down a grant, does that put us to the bottom of the list? Does that hurt our chances? And they said, no, that has no bearing. But we'd go back into the pool. We'd have to compete. So, we may not get a grant. But what Neil and I talked about also is if we turn down the grant and did this, you know, a hybrid scope, it would actually be cheaper than if we took the grant. So, really, it's really more of a win-win. Either we reapply for a grant for a larger amount. So, again, instead of spending $36,000, $250, or we do a hybrid approach on our own, which is still cheaper than if we took the grant for $190,000. So, based on that, we staff and consultant staff and Neil, we think it's in the city's best interest to authorize Neil to turn the grant down, and we'll reapply in December.
So, what would happen if we turned the grant down and we didn't get the new grant? Then where does that leave us?
It'd be on gravel.
Then, then the city would have, they could do it themselves.
At the pace we want.
And pay for it yourself, at the pace you want, correct? And what would happen is the portion of the trail, the existing paved portion, you know, along the river, we would keep it at the same width. One of the challenges with the grant is the grant would require us to widen that. Basically, we'd have to excavate into the rock. We would not do that. We would keep it the same exact width, thereby saving, you know, actually, it was about $100,000, $100,000 plus difference. More, it would save us more money than the grant itself was worth.
I know we once talked about getting a variance on that width because, yeah, like you say, you just can't dig into that rock. Not effectively.
Yeah, the DNR told us they would deny that, unfortunately.
When you said the hybrid of doing it on our own, that included fence and then the paving, which was the same in the application for the grant?
Right.
To connect the two so that you have pavement the whole way?
That's correct. Yep. The hybrid would be the fence and the portion on the, you know. The hybrid would be the fence and the portion on the, you know, the gravel portion, correct? And then we could repave it, the portion along the river, ourselves, at our own width.
So is this part of the trail, actual, is it actually a part of the Cannon Valley Trail? Because I guess, I'm wondering, with, you know, especially with increased use in the trail and getting more wheelage fees, couldn't some of that go towards it, or...
I'm going to defer that one to Neil.
I believe this is part of the Cannon City Trail, and then it connects to the Milltown Trail that goes out to the Dakota County.
Not technically a part of the...
Correct.
City Trail.
They're connected, but they're not the same.
Right.
Correct.
Right.
One good thing about it is, all of, if we do apply for another grant, the archaeological study is done, the plans and specs are all done, and if they do approve us, and we apply in December, and we, they approve us in probably April, May, we're ready to go. We can pave that thing and probably be right on task anyhow. It's just a matter of wondering if we're going to get the grant. But if you really do the math, it would be cheaper to us just to pave that stretch of gravel than to be forced to do that whole project. And then to destroy all the structure and the oak trees that are along that trail, I think if you look at plowing a twelve-foot trail through there, walk at once, it's gorgeous walking through there. And I think if you just wipe out all them oak trees and gouge into the side of that bluff, I think you'd ruin, you know, the look and, and so I, I really think it should stay, you know, whatever it is, eight feet or whatever it is now.
I think it's eight.
And, but the connection is vital. Then you'd end up with two regional trails connecting with bituminous, and I think the state realizes that. You know, it's, it's a connection. And that's why these got, they have these types of grants, to make these connections.
Yeah.
So here's a question.
Yes.
How creative could we be if it was to be wide instead of going into the hillside? Is there any kind of structure that almost makes it jut out with support underneath back into the hillside so that you get that beautiful view, and you don't have to remove the trees, and you're almost over the water? Or is that not feasible?
Well, it'd be feasible, but it'd be incredibly expensive.
Okay.
Yep.
Just as expensive or more?
More, I believe more expensive. Yeah, like a can of lever, you would call you up.
Mm-hmm, yep.
So...
For that amount of distance?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Neil, a question for you. I know we were planning on doing this, I believe, next year. Did we, are we budgeting for our share, what would have been our share?
It should have been in this year's budget.
Okay. Can't remember if it was or not.
I think it is. I think if we look at the...
Remember something else?
And so that would carry over.
So the money is there, okay.
And, and this, this grant expires in June of '21. We're already in, going into '21. Yeah, so this grant will expire. It'll give us an opportunity to, if we get another grant, to replace it, get us all of next year, and I imagine partly the year after, so...
Well, if it were going to cost considerably less to go with the grant now and just eat it and do it, and I would say, yeah, we probably should do it, but it sounds like it's better for the city to turn the grant down and start again.
You think so?
It really does.
And when you say that this wouldn't affect our chances, if I remember right, when Mike was Public Works, he said this situation is the perfect example of this specific grant. Obviously, it doesn't make our chances better or worse, or, but it seems like this situation is very well-fitted for what they're looking for.
I think the DNR wants it through this, through this.
The DNR staff has told us this will be a strong application. Probably the biggest uncertainty is just overall funding with COVID, some other things, you know, like that, so...
Yeah, okay.
So Mayor, what, ultimately what we're asking tonight is basically a motion authorizing Neil to, to notify the DNR that, to rescind the grant or not accept the grant.
Okay, so you want to make that motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second. Steve? Motion by Bill and second by Gesmi to rescind the grant from the DNR. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor?
Thank you.
Can we, can we get a motion to apply for that next one also, so we can just keep moving forward?
Okay, I'll make another motion to apply for that next grant.
I'll second.
Motion by Duncan and second by Gesmi to apply for a second grant to include the extra, what should I say, extra funds to accommodate the trail through this, to the city?
Sure.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks. Okay, let's move on to council committee and reports. Kyle here from the chamber.
Good evening, chamber and community of Cannon Falls. We do have a couple of good announcements tonight from the chamber. We did receive notice today from Explore Minnesota that we will be getting a grant of one thousand dollars to do advertising in any of their magazines. And so we're also working on hopefully a match from the Blandin Foundation, and we'll see how that goes. So that's, that's a coup. We have not advertised in those magazines, so that'll be fun.
And also for digital, too.
And digital.
And digital.
Yep, that is correct. That is correct. Now, what I'm going to talk about is, it's called Sizzling Summer Days. And it starts out with sidewalk contests that are being put on by the Cannon Bells Coffee and Ice Cream ladies. And on August 24th, it is a baking competition. And when I'm talking about competitions, these are going to be just like if they were at the Cannon Valley Fair. They're going to be judged, there's going to be prizes and awards. And so baking competition, you can bring any kind of baked goods. On Tuesday, the 25th, sewing, needlepoint, and quilting. So kind of a new direction, but the same type of judging and award-winning. On Wednesday, the 26th, woodworking, crafts, and Lego projects. That should be really fun to see what everyone can come up with. And then on Thursday evening, and these are held from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., they'll have garden, which is any kind of produce, flowers, fairy gardens, anything you grow, you can bring to this contest. Recycled and repurposed projects. And then there's also going to be a butter and cheese carving contest. And so it's going to have to be pretty darn cold to keep those nice. That evening, 5:30 on Thursday, the 27th, is going to be a rabbit agility course. Yes, it's the bunnies running an agility course. And that is actually going to be held in the parking lot behind Antiques on Fourth, Altoff's, and the Cannon River Winery. So right in that little indent. All right, if you're interested in any of those contacts, you can contact Kathy at CannonBells.com or call her at 507-757-1155. Now, the chamber has come up with a new open-air fair, similar to our FunFest's, but this is happening on the sidewalks. And depending how many vendors we'll have, they could be on Main Street, Fourth Street, and Mill Street. And so it just depends on how many vendors. And there is no fee for a booth for this event. And so you just need to contact the chamber at 263-2289, or go to CannonFalls.org, click on Events, and you'll find the complete schedule as well as the fillable registration and ST-19 forms. We will also have, Wykurt's will be doing a food shelf collection that afternoon. And so if you bring food or dollars to Wykurt's, you will get fresh cookies from Rob. And so, and they will be wrapped, just to stay with COVID. And that again is 2:30 to 6:30. There's one more great event, but I'm going to leave it for Nicole so she can have the glory. Are there any questions for the chamber? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kyle?
It's Kyle.
Okay, library board. Nicole?
She's very quiet tonight, isn't she?
Can't hear you.
Can't hear you. Unmute. Okay.
We can't...
Oopsies.
Is anyone in OESL?
Yeah, yeah, it's not her. Just write it on a whiteboard.
Nicole Glatch.
She gets it.
Yeah, Kyle, you do her.
You might have to do her anyway. It's all right, we know it came from her. We're good.
Sorry, Nicole, we can't hear you.
We'll give you full credit. And Nicole, I'm sorry, but I only know about one of your events right now. And so on August 27th, that is Thursday, from 2:30 to 6:30, the library will be doing their annual book sale on their sidewalk out front of the library. And so if you're looking for a good place to get books, come on over to the library and check it out. Thank you.
Sorry. Stayed for the whole meeting and doesn't get to talk.
We should come back on. We'll move on. The EDA, Laura, met on August 12th.
Yes, so main topic tonight is talking about the CARES Act, the Goodhue County Grant that's out there for small businesses and also nonprofits. I'm on the, I don't just work for Cannon Falls, I also am working on the Goodhue County side of this also, helping to distribute those funds, collecting applications. So for Goodhue County, so far, I've received 27 applications, and I've answered about 20 emails and phone calls, sending out applications and whatnots, and they're from everywhere. I mean, Red Wing, Zimbrotta, we've got some from Cannon Falls, there's, Dennison has a few in there. And those, we're accepting applications now, so if you know of someone that has a small business, and it's not necessarily going to be revenue replacement, it's up to $10,000 is what the grant is for. And it's for expenses, operating expenses, any facility modifications you had to make due to the pandemic, so any unbudgeted costs. So they kind of have to use the money like how we as a city have to use the money as well, something to kind of help offset that. We will be doing some type of relief grants here in Cannon Falls also, but we haven't finalized the details of that. So that would be strictly just for our Cannon Falls locations, or businesses and nonprofits. So stay tuned for details on that. And then I've been working with Neil and the Finance Committee on how we're going to allocate some of those funds, make sure that we're, you know, looking at all the different ways, you know, not just necessarily the modifications that we've made to our facility here, but some different things that we can do throughout the community, too, that will help as well. So we only have till November 15th to get this, this money spent, so it's kind of like speed shopping. But anyway, but we're, we're trying to make the best decisions possible. So if anyone has any questions, or if you know of anyone that has any questions regarding the CARES Act grant for Goodhue County, you can certainly send them my way. And so that's about the CARES Act. The other thing is that working with the Housing Initiative Board, helping them apply for an auto bramer trust grant for up to $15,000 so that we can get the land that the, the schoolhouse is built on, so we can get that put into the land trust program through First Homes of Rochester. That way it makes, it removes that property ownership from the project, and it makes the house more affordable for the homeowner. So they basically just kind of buy the house that it's on. So anyway, so we're working on that, and our deadline to get that in is middle of September. So I don't think that, they still have this year to work on the house, so they don't need to get that in until it's completed, so, but that's it.
Laura, I know we've had, at the finance meeting last week, we had not a formal request, but the school came to us and said, hey, you guys, if you don't spend all your money, here's what we need.
Yep.
You know, and I'm not opposed to giving the school that money, but shouldn't we kind of offer that up to other nonprofits and say, if there's something you're really short on, come to us, we may not be spending all of our money? We may spend it all, we may not.
Right, and, you know, and in our, kind of our initial line items that we're creating, you know, we, we have it earmarked, you know, for the school, just because, I mean, we're putting in any types of ideas, requests, and whatnot that we can come up with. So we'll see.
I'd like to have others have the opportunity so it's like, I didn't know I could ask.
Yep, well, but again, they can apply for the Goodhue County's grant. I mean, there's 2.4 million dollars that Goodhue County's got, and so it's like, go after that because it's open. You know, we aren't going to have a $10,000 grant through Cannon Falls.
We're getting over $300,000, and we're, we may struggle as to how to spend.
Yep, yep.
Because it's got to be COVID-related.
Yeah, I was going to say, Mary Jill, it's, it's got to be COVID.
Yeah. And that's one thing that we're finding with the nonprofits is that, you know, they do fall into a different category, because, you know, a lot of them, it's, they're, it's based on tours, or it's based on fundraisers that they haven't been able to have. So this money can't be used for revenue replacement, but it can be used for operating expenses or COVID-related expenses. So, you know, if a nonprofit, for instance, has a facility, you know, an office or a museum or something that they're making payments on, you know, they have utility costs, they've got a mortgage payment or a rent payment, so they can itemize all of those, and then they can, like I said, this money can kind of help offset that. They can't just put it in their register.
Right, right. But I'm thinking of, like, groups like the Food Shelf, you know, they might be buying a ton of masks right now, and a bunch of, they went, might want to put a hand sanitizer in those.
And that's why, and that's why we hope that, you know, that people help spread the word, you know, about the Goodhue County one, because they would apply, they would certainly qualify to apply for it.
But we also have ours, so I think they should know about both.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, okay.
As long as you're putting it out there, I just don't want to have someone say, I didn't know I could get money.
Does anyone have any questions about it at all?
What about peanut M&Ms?
I'm sorry?
Just figure it out, Laura.
Okay, thanks, Laura. Planning Commission, Bill?
Oh, yeah, I'll, I'll take that. We had Planning Commission last night, we did have one item that we approved tonight with the reassessment or the assessment agreement. Another couple items were approved that we'll probably see on our next council meeting. One, we asked them to go back and bring us more information as we look at that. And the final one was Greg Jabulinski brought forward a concept plan for, I believe it was 24 homes up, up on the hill near the water tower. So next month at our Planning Commission, he will bring a more detailed plans on that, and then we'll go from there.
Okay. Finance Committee, Mary Jill?
Well, at the Finance Committee meeting, we had the preliminary discussion about the Bomber Football Team, which was very quickly passed on to this group, and we made our decision tonight. We also talked about the reorganization of the Finance Department, which we approved this evening. And we talked about a lot of the things, things we were talking about tonight, because we talked about the CARES money for quite a while. I made an apparently bad suggestion, so I won't even say it. And then, because can't pay for things into the future. But then we talked about just kind of, just some basic stuff about this, but it's, it was a good meeting, and our budget is coming together very nicely, I believe, with a lot of hard work from Neil and our... I believe, with a lot of hard work from Neil and our department heads. They all should be commended for how they've really come to the table for us.
Okay. Okay, let's go around the horn. Did Nicole ever come on?
No. She's no, she's just a name.
Just a name now?
Yeah.
Okay, Laura, you got anything else? Jeff? Neil?
Couple items. At the Planning and Zoning Meeting, we always seem to struggle to get enough members. I'm just wondering if we shouldn't throw it out there that we'll need a member or two. And maybe we should advertise or do something. I think, because you've been Matt's been there twice now as an alternate. And what are we missing? One or two, depending on what we do with the attorney. So that we should probably think about that, getting that thing filled up, so we don't have to worry about calling everybody to make sure we got a quorum every every meeting.
Oh, from 5:00 to 7:00, you mean, or?
Yeah, because that's what it's scheduled at right now, is a 7:00. And so we really need to have four there to get that quorum.
And over the years, I would say that, because I was an alternate on Planning Commission for a number of years, and I sat in, like Matt's done a couple of times, an awful lot.
Yeah.
So we need citizen involvement. The problem is, unfortunately for citizens, they're not as committed as those of us sitting up here, so that becomes an issue.
And it's an evening meeting, and, you know, you don't always wanna think, you know, it always becomes an issue. You got kids and whatever.
The second thing is, I received an email today from Cannon Bells, and they would like to close the street on August 27th for one of the projects that they're doing. I think that must be the rabbit thing that they're they're wanting to close the the street on. And that Laura, that's from 5:00 to 7:00?
5:00 to 7:00.
And typically, City Council should make a motion to approve that. I got that email today. There's not another council meeting from now until the 27th. So if you wouldn't mind considering that, it's kind of.
They're talking about maybe an art fair, maybe with the sidewalk sales. They wanted to close the street, about 2:00 to 6:00 or something.
Kyle, you're still here. Is that the only thing that you think will need a street closure?
I would say yes, but I don't know that for a fact.
Because we don't have another meeting until then.
Exactly. I know that the open-air fair, that is the 2:30 to 6:30 on Thursday afternoon, is totally on the streets. And so we're not blocking any streets.
And the exhibits and judging and all that is totally on the sidewalk.
And that's what I've understood as we've been planning.
Okay.
And so, and I, you know, I'm not sure about this art contest that you somebody just mentioned. You know, that might be something that needs more room. Not sure.
Kyle, if if we close the street off for that, do we need to close all of Mill Street like we do for a Fun Fest? Or we just close it up to where you turn by the?
I would think you could close it till the turn of the city parking lot.
So that people can still get through.
And then the Fourth Street. And that way they can still take the bridge and go through.
Right.
And that would be that would work out okay. Would that be all right, Jeff?
Yes, I'm not sure exactly what it is that they need for space. But if Council chooses, we can either restrict them to just that area there, or you could authorize it up to like Veterans Lane or, you know, however you wanted to, and then have them coordinate with staff to try to maintain as much usable roadway as we can.
Right. I was just thinking that unlike a Fun Fest where the vendors stretch all the way to the bridge, we always close off that entry there. For this, it doesn't sound like you would need that. So we could keep that open.
Because it's just the one event. It's not.
Or it's just that one evening.
Right. But it's not a bunch of vendors and stuff along with it.
5:00 to 7:00?
5:00 to 7:00.
Yep.
So you need us to make that motion tonight?
Yeah, we're we don't have another meeting.
Yeah. I wanna make a motion.
The only thing I would say is even though they want it 5:00 to 7:00, authorize it from like 4:30, so that there's time to get it emptied out and ready for whatever their activities are.
Public Works.
Pawhorses. I'll make a motion to close that portion of Mill Street starting at 4:30 on August 27th.
I'll second.
Motion by Montgomery, second by Duncan, to close off Mill Street from 4:30 to 7:00 on August 27th. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Thank you.
Anything else, Neil?
Yeah, one more item. The Crowsnest received damage at the last storm that we had. And Bucky emailed us today some pictures. And we'll I had Tony go out there and take a look. But the roof is peeled back a little ways, a speaker is busted or twisted or whatever. It didn't you can't really tell. And it looks like some holes in the siding. So it might need a facelift, the way it sounds. We'll talk with the school on, apparently, the way I understand, the last time there was damage, apparently on the stairs or something, that we hired the contractor and the school paid for the project. So I'll I'll get together with Superintendent Jeff, and and we'll talk about it.
Okay, sounds good.
That's all I got.
Okay. Okay, let's go around. Derek, you got it?
I have nothing.
Morris?
Nothing.
Mary Jill?
Nothing.
Matt?
Park Board on Thursday night. The agenda, I believe, is published. And the reason I pointed at you before, it made me laugh when Kyle said it's a parking lot, because the very first time you introduced yourself to me, you said it's a road. That's Kyle called it a parking lot.
It is a road. It is a road.
That's all I got.
Bill?
Uh, nothing.
Steve?
EDA. I had somebody ask me about, now that the Cannon Falls down, that ugly thing is down, can we do something with the grass?
Grass?
In the ditches, yep. It said CJ used to keep that mold really nice, and now it's like, it's like a wasteland down there. So I said I'd bring it up, and if you got anybody
I think we should talk to our new Public Works Director.
He'll be out there about 10 o'clock tonight fixing it.
So if you check on that, I told him I'd bring it up.
You have until tomorrow. Okay.
Second of all, I'd like to thank Kevin Z for coming tonight. And I've had two opportunities to talk to you, and I think you're gonna be a good fit for us, allegedly. We don't know if you're hired yet. Yeah.
It's on the background check comes in.
Yeah, yep.
There we go.
Thank you. The only other thing I have is, should we have a Public Works meeting before Kevin starts? Or I think we got some stuff we should talk about. It's up to you. Okay.
Kevin, when do you plan on starting?
Right now, you guys approved it, and it's just waiting on the background check. And then as soon as that comes in, it'll wait two weeks after that.
So Folsom Prism Prism has gotten back to you yet?
Oh, geez.
Okay, that's all I got.
I have nothing. So with that, we're gonna get right into public input. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the record, and kindly limit your comments to three minutes. Public comments must be respectful, pertinent to city business, and adhere to the applicable data privacy rules. The City Council will not take action on any issue raised by the public, but may choose to schedule consideration of the item on a future agenda. Open public input. Second call, public input. Third and final call, public input. Make a motion to adjourn? Yeah, we'll close the public input. Motion by Steve to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Second by Lynn Bell. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.